State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down-home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole, because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Now open in Guen, Alabama, Pig Out invites you to come by and try their delicious barbecue. Country-style vegetables, homemade desserts, burgers, and many more items. We serve a lunch buffet on Sundays, Sunday 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. Our hours are Thursday 11:00 to 6:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday 11:00 to 8:00 p.m. Call us today at (205) 468-0574. Pig Out is located in Guen, Alabama, in the old Jimbo's BBQ building.
Hello, I'm Chuck. It's Span Hardware and Equipment, Winfield, Alabama. So happy to be with you today and would like to tell you about all the things we have for the upcoming spring season. We've got you covered if you want chainsaws, weed trimmers, lawn mowers, zero-turn regular lawn tractors. We also have a good selection of barbecue grills. So come see us. Thank you.
I'm here, owner-operator of Alexander's Heating and Air.
We've been family-owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and like commercial HVAC systems.
So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Hey, this is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Guen. We've been here in Guen for 10 years, serving the needs of families like yours with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Guen and Fayette. So come see me here at Guen or my wife at Fayette, and we'll be happy to serve you.
Hi, my name is Chris Nelson, owner of Nelson Boys Paint and Body LLC, located State Highway 129, Winfield, Alabama. At Nelson Boys Paint and Body, our goals are to meet your expectations in repairing or painting your vehicle. Stop by for a free estimate. Our services include glass replacement, small and large auto repairs, and we have top-notch paint booths for your painting needs. We take all insurance and can save you on your investment. Come see us and let our over 40 years experience work for you. We're here to assist you and to help you on all your auto body and paint needs. Come see us.
Plan your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guen off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality service and products with value to meet every family's need. You will find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tony Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at (205) 487-4327.
Dear Lord, just still be with Eddie Posey as he's not here with us again. Just look over at his health and all the ones that has lost loved ones the last couple weeks, the ones that's in the hospital or nursing homes. Just let us do the best judgment we can for the city of Winfield and all the things that's coming up on us. In your Son's Jesus' name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What do they move those flags?
Go back the old way.
Well, they moved it back over there.
The votes, December 6th, according to the city council. First item on the agenda is approval of Councilman Lynch from November 15th, 2022. Counselor, you got any? No questions or comments? I look at Lynch as written. I may be asked for a motion to approve.
On my question.
Gina and the second, from Keith, all the favor. Next item on the agenda is handicap parking downtown. Gina had a question for put this on the agenda.
Yes, I have someone to address an issue with me after the last election. Had just said that when they went to vote, all the handicap parking spaces were taken out, and was just asking if there was something that we could do to kind of monitor that, and then got to looking around town and noticed there wasn't any handicap spaces around. And one of their biggest concerns was Walmart, which I told them Walmart is their, you know, is a private business, and so we might need to address that with actual Walmart. But I thought I'd bring it up with Council and see what we might do as far as considering when we have things like elections and stuff like that.
How many, how many, how many parking spaces we got?
Both.
That is slim.
Two on each side, eh?
Yeah, that may be a little bit slim for that.
We've got temporary signs that we can put out where elections takes.
We got signs you can put out. Have you ever done that before voting?
I think one of their problems too was, and I don't know if they witnessed this, but people parking in those handicap parking spots that were not, did not meet the criteria, I guess.
I can see that's probably, we don't need to be stable, we don't need to be able to amend, but enough. I can see, well, that'd probably be an issue. That was one of my concerns during the vote.
That and Walmart.
Yeah, well, I know the manager at Walmart. I can reach out to the general manager, you know, so we know that we've had complaints about not being able to park in there. I don't, and these places, they got it. Now we got, we got call-in pickup orders, and they got places for the log for them to park. Money. Downtown, downtown. I don't know if we got any. I don't know if we got any.
There's some cam.
Parks down, these, down the streets right here on each side of the, that side and this side, and down in front of Antique Mall. We got any parking in, being a state highway, state, that's actually state roadway. I don't, I think if we've done any handicap, I think if we've done anything, I know if we do anything down through either, in front of any of these businesses down through here on 17143 and then 118 or 253, we'd have to, we'd have to go through the state. We can't do it without, go through the state for us that, you know, they've, they've come in and put the handicap ramps, and they've done the state, I guess that's the state DOT, that requirement that they went, because they contracted that to go around all the cities and make sure that they had those wheelchair accessible sidewalks. And I can reach out and see West and, you know, I guess thoughts is for it, maybe get some downtown, but I think what we might, you know, we might try to, it's a very busy day at the poll every time. I don't know if we, if we could monitor, have somebody know that would monitor those parking spots. I just, I hope that's somebody standing out there. Counsel, any, counsel, any other thoughts on, in the forest, downtown area between R. W. Harris and the railroads, we could probably do some handicap parking. I think there was some complaints about those.
I think there's two down there. They're on Harris's. I think there's two of them down there.
Yeah, a man.
I would say there's one on this side by the bakery.
There is.
And there's one, passing signs on the building.
Parking's an issue anyway downtown. I'm surprised, which I know Brennan, I'm surprised we don't have more problem with doors getting hit and people actually getting hit right here especially, and it's not near as crowded here. We've got three or four businesses closed over here, but those parking spaces is tight. Somebody comes in with a duly truck, it's sitting out in the road. And, you know, I've done it before, but over the years I've learned not to, from headed south, not to turn over here or park headed into, you know, that's, that's illegal parking that way. I mean, they, they could actually be fined for doing it. A lot of, there's a lot of people that does that. Parking this side, headed south. You don't see it as much.
You will on Saturdays, won't you?
Huh?
You will on Saturdays.
That's something we can look into and see how it might, might, you know, address it for us. We just got one. How many officers we got down? Past, probably, we got one inside or sitting outside? Got, don't have any? I thought we had an officer down there.
We used to, and they complained of.
For being there? An intimidation or something? Didn't realize that. This is 2022, brother. Intimidated, fellow intimidated officer proposed.
We get voted by, eh?
Probably my favorite call, that they might, in case somebody might have worn out, spend, go vote, probably, that might be, that have anything to do with it, like a warrant or something.
Oh, the, the.
I think that's the federal law, man.
Whoever is the poll chairman at the time, it was Curtis. They contacted him, Curtis checked on it, and asked us if we could read.
Is that inside or outside too?
I think my understanding is we could set it at distance, kind of like what it is for the campaigning, folks is campaigning. We can go by there and do spot checks, but we can't stay there.
I think they just don't walk through.
And we do, we still do that.
Is it? Can you carry a gun into the polls?
No.
I just remember that being an issue with open carry some, several votes.
That's probably one of them, I thought you.
We can't, but.
The public, general public can't?
I don't, I don't think so. All you got to do is put a warrant, a thing on the doors, if you can, that takes care of it. I don't know what the policy is at the park. I didn't know, it's kind of like school, you can't help. Do y'all have a policy at the park about people carrying weapons?
We were told, we were told that we can't.
Oh, is that right?
Well, similar handfuls of them.
Well, we were, we, we, we limited, we limited at one point in time, and we were told we could not, because it was a public place.
Oh, we just told.
We could not. We do not allow carrying in City Hall in this public.
I'm just telling you, we were told, specifically, we were, we were told that we could not prohibit handguns at the park.
We had the signs, and we didn't put them up.
We were told we had to take them down. Because I just didn't, I, I'm probably going to step on some toes here just any second now, but I just did not think that handguns and T-ball was a good combination.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay? But we were told we could not do that. We could not limit that, because this is open carry Alabama. So.
There, there's also.
I need to give everybody my email so they can go ahead and hit me up.
There's also, Todd can probably elaborate, but you're going to have an issue as far as the court's concerned on any kind of enforcement.
I'd like to get riding.
You want to force handicap park? I think a lot, though. I think, I mean, I always kind of stand up for citizens of Winfield, but you, I mean, there's always a bad apple in there with bags in the locker room there. You set some folks along under the rest of the apple. But anyway, I feel like that they, the citizens of Winfield, a lot of times it needs to be brought to attention, you know, they may not be thinking about anybody needing that handicap parking and be there for just a minute to run in and vote and then come back out. And I feel like that's what an issue, the issue is. I feel like if they make and say, hey, we have handicap people coming in and out all day, we need to save the spot and get in and out. But for his law enforcement, I, as, I mean, I wouldn't say that I would probably need to, but I think, I feel like that an individual person, assistant to handicap person probably could be, but there's nothing, there's nothing, there's nothing that we can do to keep Mr. Heinz from taking and helping people there at the pole vault there to get in and out at all if they were to help. If he wants to be a good Samaritan.
You want to park in there?
Of course, you help them get inside and outside. If they have a normal walker, if they're on crutches, they're in a wheelchair or whatever.
Oh, no, no.
I thought you were talking about Mr. Heinz parking in the spot and using that to help somebody. And there's a way, there's a way around this. It may be something we want to look at is to. Tow them, be it. Tow them. That's like Mule Day, you know, I get labeled that it's a towed issue, but time, you know, we, you know, I was real strong in not missing calls and making sure that if my phone was answering, it wouldn't ring. Or if the Mule Day's so crowded, you don't have good service and by the time you receive a call and try to issue, get somebody on it, they're like, where are they at? Where are they at? By the time you give them and they get there, the person's done, waiting, done, they're bolted, cornered on the cob, and they're back down there to get the cord. You know, it's, it's kind of, that'd be like, by some way you might possibly do it, however, we're sitting on site, on scene, you know, somebody parked in, because by the time they, by the time you get a delivery in there from Guen or the east of town or south of town there, there's somebody coming back in their car and they don't. Lot of that town. You know, I don't know the world. Which, you know, there's a lot of things coming to mind, how the issue could be prevented, and it's just like me telling a good Samaritan, hip and be there to help during that 12-hour period, you know. Have to be careful. God, Todd, I'm stepping on my toes. This country's so messed up, the way things is looked at, portrayed. You have to be careful what you say.
Well, I bet, I think it's not, even if it is, you're just running in under lunch to vote, still, if it's posted handicap parking only, you are a healthy person parking there that's keeping a handicap person from parking there out. It's not right. But, I mean, what are you doing?
We've seen people come in down there at 6:00, 8:00, 9:00, trying to get to that door before it's 7:00 o'clock. Things dropped, you know, and I mean, it's, it's a little, it gets kind of hectic, a little chaotic a little bit sometimes at the poll, of course, you know. We have issues with someone that can get in, get in to vote before 7:00 because it's got to be at work, got to get the kids through, blah, blah, blah. You know, it's just, it's really hard, hard times, you know, understanding. I don't know the good answer for you on this for us.
Well, here, here's one of the things that we run into. If I'm in a vehicle that has a handicap tag because I've got a wife or I've got a spouse that is handicapped, and I'm not, and I use that, or I've got a hang tag, and I'm by myself, and I'm perfectly fine, I'm perfectly healthy, but I've got a hang tag, so I park in that spot. Do I have a right to park in that spot? Because I've got the hang tag, even though I, it really applies to somebody else. And that's what we've run into. We've run into those issues. And, you know, I tell, I, I, I say this quite often. We live in a society, and we need to.
We need to do the right thing.
Yes, we do. And, and 10 years ago, you could call somebody out for that and shame them. You do that today? You're, you're the bad person for calling them out for it.
Well, I mean, my grandmother had one, and, but it was assigned to her, and she kept it in her purse. So whoever took her places, she would put it in their car. But when, you know, then she would put it away and put it in her purse. So, you know, doing the right thing, if someone's, like you said, if your spouse needs it, you don't, then you're by yourself, you, you don't take advantage of it. But that's.
It's very hard. You back me up on this. I believe it's very hard to make people do the right thing. If they don't want to do the right thing, because legally, it's almost impossible to make them do the right thing, because, so you just want people to do the right thing. And unfortunately, we have a lot of people today that don't want to do the right thing. They want to do what they want to do. That's what we're running into every day in city court. It's about what I want to do, what I want to do and how I want to do it. So it's just, it's difficult to enforce things like that. Maybe I don't need to give them my email. Maybe I don't need to give out my email. Can I get a hammer or two, or?
But I'll check, you know, I'll check. See if we can get Ford, any down here. I mean, if I was handicapped, I wouldn't want to park on either of these. I wouldn't want to park. I want somebody to get me out and bring me. I wouldn't want to park. I'm trying to stand handicapped, it's different. Graves would be a handicap or whatever, but it's bad, dangerous right here to get out.
I think the biggest concern was Pacific Center, Dior, and election. Those are the two places that they actually spoke about.
Well, I mean, if you've got those signs, you can, you can put, and you can just put those on the wall, on the community center, you know, all the way down that wall on those sides during the election, just have every one of those marked off, you know, it's handicapped.
All right, the next item on the agenda is 2023 holiday schedule. Everybody got a copy of that? Holiday schedule. Todd, my connection is, I don't have a cell phone, I got it on every time, but if it's already in place, then you have to, unless you're adding, taking work on it, you have to visit this every year.
If, if we're not adding or subtracting, I mean, I would think that we're, we're establishing a, a holiday, these are our holidays, and unless we make a change to it, we're not, we're going to roll over. If we do make a change, we would need to go in that change and add it.
The days are always different.
The actual date is different, but the days are the same. But, I mean, now, Mayor, I will say this, sometimes if we're taking two days for Thanksgiving, it's always the same, because it's a third, yeah. But now Christmas, sometimes on Christmas, depending on when it is, our two days may be this time, and then may be a different time, and same thing with New Year's. So if you give two days, two days is two days, but you're going to have to establish when those two days will be observed, if you're going to move them back and forth because of when Christmas falls.
And like Bethens Day, this year was on a Saturday, so we observed it the Friday before, which next year's going to be on a Sunday. So then do we, you know, this past year, so we're going to observe it. So the next time it'll be on a Sunday, so we will either observe it that Friday or that Monday. So days like that, you would need to put it in, I guess.
And I, well, I think you just. If we get so many days a year, and these are the days we get, then all you would need to do is just notify the employees what days we're going to take for those two. You don't have to do necessarily take action on it. You just got to decide what, which two it is going to be, and then let your employees know annually when those two days will be.
It's pretty well hard, the furlough this week, holiday plan anyway. And they're the ones that decide, like on Wednesday, that we're supposed to have a Friday for lunch. And for this one, they think it's on Friday.
I think if they fall on Saturday, you take the Friday, and if they fall on Sunday, then you take that Wednesday. And then you see how it comes.
Well, you said it was coming on Sunday this year.
No, I'm saying next year. Like this, this coming up for '23, it's going to be on a Saturday, so we're taking Friday. So then in '24, it'll be on Sunday.
Still the same day.
So. But, yeah.
There's no, you know, there's no changes for us. Take no arguments, we're gonna like it.
Twenty twenty-four will be on time of change, this for Christmas of the year should be on Monday, Tuesday, maybe.
There was, well, I got it, it's a day after.
Yeah. Call them, get a holiday card, so. Keep them managed, maybe where they are.
Maybe it's lucky it is. Uh, next item begins contract written between NACOG and City of Winfield. Is everybody familiar with this contract that we do every year with NACOG? They, they keep us up to speed for his grants, you know, in Washington, we usually take a trip every year. But this one, same, and then it applies to the tuition.
This, this is the contract, oh, this resolution. It's not that one. This contract is for this project. That's what you're talking about.
I mean, we've been a member of NACOG ever since I've been here now, Todd can probably go back for any, you want to tell about how that far that we have been with NACOG. They do a really, 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 really good job for us, handling their grants and keeping us posted for grants as available. Having this life of grants, having us get, get things put in like it needs to be put in. They, they do a lot of the hard leg work and that, you know, they come to us when they need other stuff added to it and tell us if we need to do this or get letters or wherever, you know, they, they do a good job for us. They already be for us in Montgomery and in Washington, it makes a big difference. They take a group, they take a group, willing, senators and representatives there tell you that it, it, it means more to them when it comes as a group and they, they come as a northwest local governments. They, they take a big group, probably many of thirty, twenty-five, thirty people in a group. When they go. It's my recommendation that the council agree to go ahead and do a stay under contract with NACOG to handle this for us. Ask for motion to do the process resolution. We have a resolution for the project, for another project, what you did. We have a resolution number thirteen twenty-nine, authorizing Northwest Alabama Council Local Government to administer CDVG project. That's, that's a project, it's a project. Yeah. They just need to ask to stay under contract with them. Make motion ten second. It's key, all in favor. I'm gonna need to act on this resolution number thirteen twenty-nine, authorizing Northwest Alabama Council Local Government to administer CDVG project number LRC PF twenty-two dash oh twenty-five, whereas the City of Winfield has received a CDVG, small city grant for demolition in Winfield. Whereas the recipient of the grant is conditional, is conditional upon providing conditions that Alabama Department of Economic and Community Fairness no later than January the third, twenty twenty-two. Therefore, it be resolved, the City of Winfield does hereby authorize Northwest Alabama Council Local Government to provide administration services for the project as provided on the contract, the deck of policy level number one, letter number one, revision nine. Therefore, it be resolved, the City of Winfield authorized its mayor to enter into a contract with Northwest Alabama Council Local Government to provide services for a fee not to exceed twenty-nine thousand five hundred. I need to ask for a, a motion and second to approve their resolution thirteen twenty-nine for demolition project. Gene, Keith, second, all in favor. There's still some legwork, but you know, we, we've been, the project's been approved by deck, but there's still several steps that we've gotta go through to be able to put that out for bid. They're doing the same thing, I think, at Florence, they had a little bit of problem getting bids. On the project, they've got over for about fifteen, sixteen houses. Structures. I want to head and took care of five there at the same time. Oh, the next item begins over business, Keith, you got it?
The red lights, of course. We heard anything at that date on that?
Yeah, you might have missed one time.
No, I was, well, I know we had to order them, so I haven't ordered.
Lights, we have, state has the lights. Uh, they have actually scheduled a time to, to, to put these in at any age. About that one email that we had, they've got time scheduled to put them in, but the, the cameras may not be in when they install them. It may still be on a rotating type loop, you know, seventy seconds for each light. The cameras, you know, it's like a loop, if there's nobody there to change where, if the car's sitting. Both the cameras, I think, is the only thing that we're waiting on, but I said a date. I don't remember, I'll go back and look through that email, but I think it's within a week or three to go ahead and put these. Uh, rest of it up.
That's just, um, I'm talking right now.
Johnny? No, I'm good, you're good. Uh, I would like, while he's sitting here, I'd like to bring us up to speed a little bit on the antique mall. Forers, how the job went, how the, how satisfied the tenant is that's in the antique mall for his work done and what you feel like still needs to be maybe addressed because I think there's some issues that you've got. Water, drainage is a little different now than what it was before for whatever reason. Like, if you don't mind, I'd like, because I wonder, whole business, if you might kind of bring the council up to speed, what you're dealing with there.
The one thing, uh, I think they're right on the very end of finishing as far as the contractor, as far as the contractor bid. Miller Roofing still has to do, they're gonna put a flashing all the way around the building, they still lack that. And to make sure that there aren't any, they had a couple of leaks earlier this week. And I think it's just getting up underneath the membrane is what it amounted to. But as far as the contractor goes, I think he's pretty much pulled out. I sent Angie a note and she forwarded to the insurance and contractor, maybe to Randy, of some of the things that I kind of highlighted that maybe they didn't meet the full contract or the full bid of what, what they said they were gonna do. In other areas, they did a little bit more. One area was the windows and that's what I was really afraid of in the beginning. The bid actually did not say replace all the windows and I pitched a fit about that because that's the storefront, that's what everyone sees. And if you have so, one set of silver windows and four sets of black windows, it wasn't, it wasn't gonna match. And they finally saw eye to eye and I don't know if they'll say that they spent the reserve money on that or what they'll say. But at any rate, they did replace all the windows and I'm very satisfied. And I'm very satisfied with the contractor as far as what he did. There are, there is a water problem behind the store, all the, the whole length of basically all three basements. And we, we just have to do some drainage as far as lowering the, the ground level and channeling that water away from the wall or away from the doors of, of that. My back wall in the dam, in the building that was damaged is flooding pretty bad, it's seeping in extra strong now. And it didn't used to do that, so it is, it is worse now than what it was. And what I would suggest looking at is probably putting in some kind of sump pump in the corner of that building and I don't think that would be terribly expensive. But that way, when water does get in there, I don't, I don't know that you could fix it, honestly, other than getting the water. I think there's water that might be coming down up underneath the floor at that point in one corner. And it's feeding, when it rains, the, the groundwater comes in and, you know, it's a steady, steady run. So I think a sump pump or something like that may have to be installed. As far as the contractor goes, I, and I don't know if the whole council knows this, I know Randy knows it, I took down the lights that were in the third building and put them in the basement because every light, every fluorescent or every ballast light in the building burned up with power surge. I went eleven months without powering that third building and the weight of the ceiling was sagging pretty good before we ever got a contractor in there to work on it. I took the lights down and put them in the basement and rewired that. And the thing is, the contractor shows no electrical work on the bid whatsoever. So I'm either gonna have to take those lights back down and bring them up and, and buy a few extras or we're gonna have to buy new lights for that third building. But there isn't but one fluorescent light in there and they are pretty adamant that they're not gonna do it. There is an issue with the floor in the third building, in, right in front of the windows, there's three holes. One window frame went through the floor of the building. And it plainly says on the bid that any water damage, any deterioration, any large cracks that need to be addressed, they're supposed to replace and they stopped. They, they did one, I would say, one four by eight section, maybe a, a four, maybe a four by twelve section that they replaced of plywood. And they didn't like doing it and kind of pitched a fit over that also because they found some termites in that area. And they, and water plainly ran in there for the last eleven months and drains. And, uh, but they did fix that one area, uh, in there. But at any rate, everything is going pretty good. My, my suggestion or what I would like to see happen is a representative come down there from the city, tour the place, see what, where your money has been spent, see what they did, what they didn't do and y'all decide if we're done, you know, to pay the bill. That's, that's what I would suggest and then we can go over what else needs to be done. I put in forty-five hours of painting in that third room, it looks pretty good, it looks way different than it ever has. But I did all the painting. The insulation, I'm very upset with the contractor, with the insurance because they, all they did was replace the missing ceiling tiles, they did not take. That, that's one reason I took the lights down because I thought from the beginning that they were replacing the ceiling in that room. Well, they just repaired the ceiling, so we've got a lot of waves and we've got a lot of, of things that, you know, don't look perfect, but it's, it's up and it's covered. But the thing is, all they did was put insulation over the ceiling tile that they replaced. All the other insulation was blown all over and wasn't covering the ceiling. So I've spent another thirteen hours doing that. So I'm trying to keep up with this if you want to present that to the insurance company because I think that is part of the bid as far as the ceiling tile and insulation, the painting isn't, but the, the floor definitely is. In my opinion. But if one of you see, or all of you, see what they did and see the condition of the building and want to give your stamp of approval on it, that's great. If you want to proceed to say, hey, this wasn't done correctly or finished, then, then, you know, you've got, you, you can see firsthand what it is. But that's, I don't, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's pretty much what I've, what I've remembered offhand without notes.
Well, you told me what we wanted to know, what I wanted to hear. In areas that went above a little bit in the front for us, windows.
Windows, windows are the only thing that I know of.
But for us, the floor being fixed where it was damaged, it's not fixed where it was damaged now. And the ceiling tile and insulation's not put back like it was before it was in there and the lighting issue. It's the way the whole deal, you know, how the whole thing happened. It's an, this, this definitely was a learning experience here because it's the first storm that I've ever had any deal with with the insurance company for the city and how that is totally different, the way they handled it versus me and an adjuster handling my private property or whatever.
Not writing the check or making you bid.
I kind of wished that we. I mean, we went back and forth so many times, so much to start with, trying to get, you know, how it was gonna be done. Of course, you know, they hired a consultant, insurance hired a consultant to come out and I'm a little bit dissatisfied with the amount of because the amount of coverage we had, consultants paid come out of my coverage, out of the city's coverage, you know, last twenty-five.
Well, that's one thing I brought up to them because that's one thing that I was very disappointed from and you can respect this from that, they basically charged twenty-five, what I understand, twenty-five thousand dollars to evaluate and draw up that building. Well, when they, they put up the wall, the, the new wall, tore off the temporary wall, put up the new wall, they waited about a week and they came back and insulated and put, put a wallboard in there. And I said, what, I, you know, I called the insurance man and, and told him, you know, that what happened, what about the outlets? What about electricity? I've got a hundred foot wall with no electricity. He says, well, did you have electricity on it? And I kind of went off on it, I said, look, y'all charge the city twenty-five thousand dollars for an engineer to evaluate and draw this and you didn't see electricity on the existing wall? You know, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just a little guy, but I'm not stupid and, you know, that was a stupid mistake. And so they, they basically came in and put electricity on the inside of the wall and conduit because they didn't want to tear the, 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 uh, wallboard out again. Which, you know, we can live with that and it, it looks good and, and, and all as far as that, but it's not what it was and it's not, it wasn't the right thing to do, that, that was their mistake. But the whole point of that is, you spent twenty-five thousand dollars for, for a professional to come out and draw it up. It didn't, it isn't just some jackleg that came in here and, and repaired that building. They, they went by the book, so if they're going by, by the book, they stick by the book and get, get our money's worth out of it.
You know, you know, I thought, I feel like we need to look at how that's handled the next time when we have, if we have them, which I hope we don't, if we have a major claim with that nature. Uh, but, uh, I had kind of asked Mike to see if the project comes there every day. He knows what it was before the storm hit, he was in the storm when it hit. And they got to the point where they wouldn't, you know, they just didn't want to, they wanted, they didn't want to listen to him, you know, when he was trying to tell them that things weren't like, going back like it was supposed to go back. So they kind of cut you off.
In that respect, they did, but, but again, the contractor did do a good job and they did listen, but they were also, they stuck by what the blueprints, what the bid was. And it's, it's just like the electricity, if, if electrical, it didn't, see, I don't have any phone in that room, you know, and that, and, you know, it's gone. It, it, it's, if we want, if we, I can live without a phone, but the whole idea of it, they didn't, they didn't come back and bring the building back the way it was. They went by the bid and we have to understand it, that's the difference between the insurance to begin with, the.
The blueprint, so to speak, wasn't like it was supposed to be.
The blueprints and the bid was not what the, anything like what the insurance claim was to begin with. Yeah, that, there is, there, there was a large difference doing it, not just cutting back, but just a lot of stuff left out, period.
What the council, how, how the council feels about what we need to do for the lighting issue for us? But I, the way I am about a, a water issue, which we know a water creek runs through that building. That's not, that's not the issue.
No.
But you're saying you're getting more water now than you did before.
I'm, I'm especially on the, I'm getting water in the basement of the damaged building more. It's seeping in, whether it's the back wall or it's the parking lot. It's seeping in whether it's the back wall or it's the parking lot wall to the pizza bar or, you know, drainage, but anytime it rains, you can go down there and watch water basically run in at the floor level.
Let me ask, did, let me remember, did they, did, did the asphalt come in there after the storm or was asphalt there before?
Before the storm.
Before the storm hit, did you have a waterfall after that asphalt was done?
It was less. I, I could still, I would still have dampness and I don't have dampness running down the wall. Now it's basically coming into the floor.
On the bottom.
On the bottom.
You, you, me and you, I spoke a little bit about a, uh, flume, so to speak, or a, on that northwest corner.
Mm-hmm. On the back side.
On the back side.
By the alley.
To get it down to the ditch away from the building.
What I wanted to do was basically dig down at the foundation level or a little bit below and channel the water out. Now, I don't know that that's gonna solve all of the water, but it won't build up at that back wall anymore if we do that. And that's why I'm still thinking maybe if we install a sump pump, you know, just a little area where if water runs in that low spot, that it could be pumped out instead of flooding the whole basement. Cause I've got, right now I've got, I've got about 60 foot length of water in the basement, probably five foot out from the wall. That's how much water, from the rain that we got in the last two days, that's, that's how much water I've got in there. And it's not running, it's not, not deep or anything like that, but that's the low spot of the wall, but it's all coming in that back corner from what I could see. And it doesn't necessarily mean it's all from the storm, but it is, it is different than what it used to be.
Things, I mean, a, a little bit of stuff has changed, you know, but we had a little, we had a little bit of a water issue prior to the storm.
Right.
It's just you're saying it's worse now than what it was. Um, I'd like the council to let me maybe get a concrete person with, at Forest's time to ditch that water, pour concrete, let pour the ditch away from that building and get that water. Start with that and if we have to, plus, and if we have, if we need to, to do a sump pump in there. How many square feet we got in the room?
Uh, 11,000.
We got 11,000. How many, how many years have you been in that building?
Over 20.
It's been, it's been rented for nearly 20 years in that building.
Y'all have had the building probably 12, something like that is what I would guess, maybe more.
I'm supposed to go.
16.
18, yeah. Uh, I, I'd like the council to let us do what we need to do to fix that water problem. So if we need to get a specialist maybe come out and look at it, if we need to pour concrete and build a ditch to get away from it, uh, that, that building is, to me, it's, it's too much of a building and part, and too much part of our town not to take care of what we need to do for that building. With a theater shape, we've got the theater in and the civic center there on the corner. We need to, um, do what we need to do for the lighting. I'd like to see LED lighting put back in there.
Go around the ballast. Now, wait, if there's LED, we put LED throughout the store and that's what, that's what's down in the basement now. So after that, we won't have any ballasts in the store at all. But the, uh, I did check at the local hardware store today to see and there's two, two routes. You can go, you can buy ballast lights and cut the ballast out or you can put in LED strips. Now, there's bulbs throughout the store, uh, and you can do whatever you want. You can go with the strips or you can go with, with the bulbs. And the price isn't a big difference, but it's, I would say $2,600 for 20, oh, seven, 20, 28 fixtures and bulbs, uh, in that. So either way, it's, it's, it's like $2,200 versus $2,600 somewhere in there were the two different ideas or ballparks of what it would be without labor.
But I'm looking, uh, and with storms. Uh, we'll reach out and you, you've varied a point recently since you feel like what up the park is.
Yeah.
Uh, I appreciate you, you know, appreciate you having business in the.
I appreciate being in the building and appreciate the city.
And overseeing the project.
For what it is.
What concerned a little bit, you said you had a couple of leaks this week?
It concerned everybody, but they, it's, it's on the theater side of the wall, uh, that wall there and they think that water was coming up, up underneath the, over, where they, where they brought it over the edges, they're thinking that's where it, where it was, but.
And they think that's gonna be an easy fix?
Uh, they, they think they can handle it from what Miller said anyway. It's just finding the actual sources of the water. We had three leaks.
How, how much roof did David watch?
The whole thing, which now that surprised me. I didn't know we were getting, but Miller came in, that's something else too. Did you get, does the city know if they got charged by Miller the day after the storm? They came in packs, I think, I think they said 28 areas in that.
That, stealing has been real good for us having.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, getting this.
And that's here, neither here or there, but what I'm saying is, I was surprised that the bid included the complete roof. Cause I thought it was just gonna be the third building and they, they did all three roofs. And so you'll notice the front of the building will look a lot better in, in the sides because they're putting flashing, uh, all around, a dark, a, a dark flashing all the way around.
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna work on this water issue at the back.
I would suggest probably looking at the whole back wall of all three buildings just to get it, channel it away from the doors. Cause what it's doing, it's running in the doors on the other two buildings.
Let me ask you this, since I asked you on the pizza bar side with asphalt, that's the side we've been talking about for us asphalt. When you report just a couple of asphalt between the theater and the antique mall, did it change any of the water issue?
It changed the water flow. Yeah, it changed the water flow on that, on that first building because that's where I'm struggling because it, it, the water, the, the, actually the ground slopes towards my door now and all that water is running, you know, they put in a French drain, but see, that property was never, uh, recompacted or, or, it wasn't leveled or anything afterward. And so the water basically runs in the door there in a, in a heavy rain, in a heavy rain.
Yeah, but we don't, they don't know about dampness in a house.
No, no.
I mean, that's what concerns me.
Well, that's my new office. That's where I put all my investment stuff in that basement.
We don't need the dampness underneath that wall.
Yeah.
And, uh, the house, because the building's older, we don't need, we don't need no work on that and that's what I'm, I try to, you know, I don't even like thoughts of sump pump, to be honest, where you pumping it out. And I, I feel like if we need to dry it up and, or not have, have.
That may solve the problem.
So I'm gonna, counsel, counsel check and see what we do for you. I appreciate that Mike was here bringing those up to speed on that. And being a, being a business person in Winfield overseeing it and being there for 20 years with your business, cause I know the X traffic, uh, through, through town, people come through and I don't know if you're.
It amazes me every week, the amount of folks that come to town for that reason or stop because of that sun.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, nobody else got any other business. I guess I gotta ask for a motion to pay the bill. If I don't have any questions, I don't know. Uh, I'm betting on bills, what bills we asking pay, I need to pay them. Pretty much fine every time.
Skip this now?
Well, we need to skip. Back in the day, we had to skip, but it was skipped right now. Do you have my motion and team second all in favor? Anybody else got any, any ask for motion for the term? Tim, my own time, Tim. Few second. All in favor?
State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century. And today, we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole. Because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Now open in Guen, Alabama. Pig Out invites you to come by and try their delicious barbecue. Country style vegetables, homemade desserts, burgers, and many more items. We serve a lunch buffet on Sundays, Sunday 11 to 2 p.m. Our hours are Thursday 11 to 6 p.m., Friday and Saturday 11 to 8 p.m. Call us today at 205-468-0574. Pig Out is located in Guen, Alabama, in the old Jimbo's barbecue building.
Hello, I'm Chuck at Span Hardware and Equipment, Winfield, Alabama. Uh, so happy to be with you today and would like to tell you about all the things we have for the upcoming spring season. We've got you covered if you want chainsaws, weed trimmers, lawn mowers, zero turn, regular lawn tractors. Uh, we also have a good selection of barbecue grills, so come see us. Thank you.
He's here, owner, operator of Alexander's Heating and Air.
We've been family owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and like commercial HVAC systems.
So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Hey, this is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Guen. We've been here in Guen for 10 years, serving the needs of families like yours with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, um, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Guen and Fayette. So come see me here at Guen or my wife at Fayette and we'll be happy to serve you.
Hi, my name is Chris Nelson, owner of Nelson Boys Paint and Body LLC, located State Highway 129, Winfield, Alabama. At Nelson Boys Paint and Body, our goals are to meet your expectations in repairing or painting your vehicle. Stop by for a free estimate. Our services include glass replacement, small and large auto repairs, and we have top-notch paint booth for your painting needs. We take all insurance and can save you on your stuff. Come see us and let our over 40 years experience work for you. We're here to assist you and to help you on all your auto body and paint needs. Come see us.
Plan your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guen off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at 205-468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality service and products with value to meet every family's need. You will find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives that lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tony Bowen, certified funeral service practitioner at 205-487-4327.